...of March 2, 2023, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We need to make a motion to call the meeting to order and do be a roll call.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we call the meeting to order.
Yes. Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney, not present. Covino?
Oh, is Ernie?
He said yes.
Ernie says yes on the video. Member Pembah?
Yes.
Member Natola?
Yes.
Member Sutherland? She's giving a thumbs up. Okay.
Great. The Town of Burlington will be holding the March 2, 2023 meeting. The Planning Board is a hybrid meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the Governor issued an executive order in March 12, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Code C30A, Section 20, and extended by Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March 31, 2023.
As always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting, but please note that while an option for remote attendance or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Those seeking to participate remotely can do so via the following. If you go to townofburlingtonwebex.com, the meeting number is 2348-1242489. You can also join by phone at 1617-315-0704. The meeting is broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel, on Comcast 99, RCN 15, and Verizon 41, and streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Government Facebook page.
Thank you. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone of a set of rules governing public participation at this and all subsequent meetings approved at the meeting of February 2, 2023, and these are as follows. The Planning Board welcomes public participation at its meetings under the following conditions. Public participation on matters that are on our agenda are allowed at the time of the Board's discussion on that matter. The Chair will call for comments for the public at that appropriate time. Commenters must wait to be recognized by the Chair. Each participant will be allotted two minutes to speak and must restrict comments to the agenda item being discussed. There will be time at the beginning of each meeting that is set aside for public comments on matters not on the current agenda. The Chair will call for comments from the public at that appropriate time. Commenters must wait to be recognized by the Chair. Each participant will be allotted two minutes to speak and must restrict comments to matters which are under the jurisdiction of the Board. Planning Board jurisdiction includes the following: long-range planning efforts, parcel rezoning applications, special permit applications, insignificant change applications, zoning bylaw changes, site plan applications, minor engineering change applications, and preliminary definitive subdivision applications. Public participation must be conducted in a respectful, professional manner. Threats, incitement to imminent lawless conduct, obscenities, personal attacks, defamatory statements, and sexually explicit statements will not be tolerated.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Last meeting, when I was chairing the meeting in your absence, I was asked a question by someone during Citizens Time. The question was regarding if there is a complaint procedure that one can follow if they wish to file a complaint with the Town against the Planning Board. I checked with administration, who referred me to Town Council, and Town Council explained that there is no formal process to file a complaint against an elected board with the Town, and the remedy for someone who is dissatisfied is at the ballot box.
Thank you. Item 2 on our agenda is public participation. Each participant, again, will be allotted two minutes and must identify themselves prior to speaking. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an item that is not on our current agenda?
Thank you. My name is Sunil. I am a Longtown resident, and I am here because I had the opportunity to work with the Board, and I observed many opportunities to improve on how the Board works. I want to talk about a few things, but I know that the time is short now. It used to be three minutes. Now it's only two minutes. So I'll keep it short with the hope that you guys will listen to what I'm saying and hopefully bring some improvements.
If this is a matter of how we're conducting our business, this is not a matter that we're going to be taking our time. We've explicitly explained numerous occasions that we are only taking public participation time to discuss things that include applications, subdivisions, and efforts of such. We have heard and received several notifications from you regarding how you feel we conduct our business. And while we appreciate your opinion, Vice Chair Barbara LaRue has obviously stated that if you do not like the way that we conduct our business, you can meet us at the ballot box.
We can say that again? I can meet you?
You can vote at the ballot box.
That's the only choice I have, voting?
If you have...
No, if I have a complaint against the Board...
If you have a complaint against the Board, both Chair Priest and myself and Council has said that you're well within your right to remedy this in a legal fashion.
Take the matter to court.
That is... That is well within your right, sir. This is not a matter that we're going to continue to conduct business during our time. Our time is valuable, just as yours is.
Yes.
And we have business to conduct, and this is not part of the business that we're going to be conducting this evening. So I would appreciate it if you would kindly step down.
Can I just finish what I'm saying?
No, you can't.
It's about the... It's not about the Board's work. It's about other things that you say, right?
It's about what?
It's about... Let's just say it's about democracy, promoting democracy.
No, that's not what we're here doing. This is not the venue for that.
And there is no other option I have to file a complaint?
You can...
So how... I have just one question. You... We just took the oath about promoting liberty and justice.
This is not the venue to discuss liberty and justice. This is the venue to discuss Planning Board matters. We have gone through several interactions, Mr. Prashapati, and I respectfully disagree that this is the venue, and we have stated the same. So I'm kindly asking you to step down so we can continue our meeting.
Okay, can I just make one motion that...
Sir, your two minutes is up. Thank you. Have a good evening. Moving on to announcements, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Liz, can we move on to announcements, please?
Sure. So it was the 224th birthday for Burlington, which was founded in February 28, 1799. There was a discussion at the Select Ward regarding this celebration and for next year's milestone. So they're getting ready to do the 225th celebration. The ZBRC Sign Subcommittee is meeting March 6 at 5:30 via Zoom. Sculpture Park Subcommittee, March 8 at 8:30 via WebEx. And as usual, Concom is meeting on March 9 in Town Hall, Main Hearroom, and via WebEx.
Moving on to matters of appointment. Item A is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.6.10, Restaurants of the zoning bylaws, 154 Cambridge Street. Goodnight Johnny's, American Music Bar LLC is the applicant.
Hey, folks.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board. For the record, Attorney Mark Vaughn. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Mr. John Tebow, and Goodnight Johnny's Restaurant and Music Bar. I know John is participating virtually here. He's on. I can see him. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to be here in person. And also with me is Mark Yenowitz, the architect of record for the project, and Steve Duffy, the property owner, who I think many of you may remember from several years back when we were going through the approval process for the shops at Simon's Park as here as well. But I know we're all excited about being able to be here for this application for a special permit for a restaurant to be located at the shops at Simon's Park. I know that several of you were on the Board when we were getting approval for the, obviously, the former Building 19 site. Joe, Barbara, Bill, and I think Ernie, if I... Yeah. So just by way of background, again, this was approved by the Planning Board several years ago. The development itself, the corner where this restaurant is to be located was always envisioned to be a restaurant. In fact, if you go out there today, you see that there's the outdoor patio and the outdoor seating component that was always envisioned to be for this location. So the location is, when you enter in off of Cambridge Street, it would be the first tenant space on the left where that cursor is right there. And I'm going to introduce John in a moment because I know he wants to just explain a little bit about his restaurant, the concept and his vision. But this restaurant, as I said before, was always envisioned to be at this location. It's a little bit bigger square footage-wise than what was originally contemplated. But again, if the Board might remember, there was really no specific tenants in mind. We were trying to make a guess, if you would, in terms of what the tenant spaces would be, how the demising walls would be. So this restaurant's square footage is a little bit larger than what was originally envisioned. But it's a concept that I know John is very excited about bringing to Burlington. It's a family-style restaurant, looking to have a live music component as well for certain evenings, to be able to liven it up a little bit and provide a nice outlet for folks. But the intention is to really appeal to the residents of Burlington, something that is a little bit, you know, closer to them, if you would, than having to go all the way down to, you know, Mall Road or wherever it might be. But something that is more kind of central, perhaps, for a lot of folks in town. So the... Obviously, we're here because it is a special permit requirement for any restaurant within the zoning district. But John, rather than my babbling on here, why don't I introduce you? And you can just talk a little bit about what your vision is for the location, and that'd be great.
Thank you, Mark. I'd like to thank the Board for the opportunity to present to you tonight. I apologize for not being there in person, but my disability doesn't allow me to drive any longer. So with that said, I've spent the last five years looking for a location for a restaurant that has a live entertainment component to it. And I've... My team and I have done an inventory of restaurants in Burlington, and we've come to the conclusion that while there's a lot of high-end steak houses and Italian restaurants, and now in Asian bistro restaurants are really starting to dig in, we couldn't find a restaurant that really catered to the family community of Burlington. So what I'm trying to do today is to put a restaurant in the center of town that is really focused on what the residents of town, serving the residents of town as a family restaurant. We won't be selling $50 steaks. You know, we're going to be offering Family Fair at affordable prices, and our menu's going to feature American comfort food. So things like meatloaf and baked fish and prime rib and things like that. We're hoping to open by December 1. We have a lot of work to do to finish the construction of this building, and we're hoping we can get our permit approved tonight so that we can start the work. Mark?
Thank you, John. I know, obviously, up on the screen is the menu that John spoke of in terms of kind of a comfort food concept. And I know that his hours of operation that he's talking about would be until 11 o'clock at night. I think Friday and Saturday would like the flexibility to go to midnight. Would not be open Mon... These are preliminary hours, right? Not open on Monday, and then Sunday, I think it would be open until 3:00 PM. More of like a Sunday brunch type of concept on a Sunday. Floor plan is part of the submission package as well. There's a combination of interior and exterior seating. That's the current floor plan. The... John spoke to the live music component, and I just want to emphasize something. That's all internal to the restaurant. There's nothing that's outside on the patio. Right where your cursor is, right there, Caleb, is where the stage would be, if you would. And I think when we say "stage," it's not something that's elevated, Mark. Is that correct?
Correct, for accessibility reasons.
Yeah. Just that would be the area...
Simply an area of the floor. You know, it'd be envisioned more small trios and combos, you know. And as mentioned, more blues, jazz, country. Not so much, you know, louder rock-type of things, although there might be classic rock night, and they may do programmed music and a karaoke night or something like that. But music would be a theme of the restaurant, and, you know, the interior decor would kind of play to that more Americana, you know, musical and, you know, playful, warm atmosphere.
It's important to note that we are not looking to open up a concert venue. This is going to be background music while people are dining, so it's going to be at a very low decibel level so that people can have conversations during dinnertime. And again, the entertainment will facilitate dancing and provide a venue that's not currently available in town.
Great.
And, you know, we feel that the use very much complements other tenants that are in that area as well. This is one of the only tenants that would actually be... I think is the only one that would be open during the evening hours. Most of the businesses that are in there, you know, during the day. So I think it's a good complementary arrangement to, you know, reflect with the surroundings, so. I don't want to get too detailed, but if you have... There is the ability to have some function room space as well that's on the bottom of that floor plan. It's almost like a collapsible wall, if you would. I'm not sure we've fully designed, Mark, how that wall would function. But, you know, if families wanted to have a function or rent it out to have a baby shower or something like that, there's an area that would be amenable to that, so. But again, I know... I've talked to John about this before. I actually am excited being a live music fan. I think that's something that, you know, it's kind of lacking in the area, right? To be able to go out and have a meal and enjoy, you know, someone playing some background music. So I know that'd be a nice addition to the town, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. Does anyone on the Board have any questions?
Well, I'm excited to hear about this. We do have to go pretty much to somewhere else to get this type of thing. I don't really have a lot of questions. I did want to say that we have a lot of talented young people in this town, and I think it might be really exciting if perhaps after they're established, the owners might want to reach out to the Real School of Music and other things like that. Maybe on weekdays, you could give students some opportunities to prepare. Will the live music be Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
The live music is currently planned for... Friday and Saturday nights. I've already reached out to the Berklee School of Music to bring in students as a potential venue for them. I think your idea is a good one, and it's something that we're giving serious consideration to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I second this. I think this is a wonderful idea.
Two things. Have you thought about a brunch menu? And then also, I saw what you had, but you would mention it was a family restaurant. Will there also be kids' options?
There will be a children's menu. We have not developed a brunch menu yet. We're still working on that.
Great. Great. I think that would be wonderful, to have a brunch establishment on the side of town. I'm looking forward to you opening. Employee parking will be...
So as part of the standard conditions, and I know, you know, Mark has done a lot of permitting, restaurant permitting in town, that we usually do a standard condition in the permit that, you know, you have an employee parking plan so that employees aren't parking closest to the door so that it doesn't become an issue. But also, if employees are parking far away and it's night, that the restaurant provider provides somebody to walk them to their car for safety reasons. But generally speaking, yeah, we want to, you know, we want to have it posted somewhere in the restaurant that, you know, employees don't park in prime parking. It's generally kind of a standard condition.
Will the patio be open during the cooler seasons? So will there be any, like, heat lamps or anything along those lines?
The outside seating will be seasonal.
Yeah, there might be some heaps to just, you know, take the chill off of fall, late fall or early spring evening. But the intent isn't to, you know, enclose that or have it be anything beyond the traditional season.
Okay. Is there any thoughts about noise control during those seasons? If you are having... If you do have a band, you know, I assume the patio doors would be shut. Just, you know, I've received some phone calls from some neighbors who were concerned about noise. So, you know, I just want to make sure that we're addressing those concerns and that, you know, the live music will be indoors and it will not be outdoors.
Yeah, that's certainly the case. I mean, there is no... This isn't the type of place... The building is the building. You can see it now, right? So it's not like we're looking to put in like an overhead garage door where the music would emanate out. So everything is enclosed within the building. So the music would not be... There's no speakers, John or Mark, that would bring the music outside. We're not looking to have any live entertainment out on the patio. So I think it's well-controlled in that regard, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
You know, I would also add, this location within the shops at Simon's Park is actually the furthest removed from any of the residential. And you have that building in the back that provides a sound buffer as well to the... I forget the name of the street that's back there, but so.
Dear Bourne.
Dear Bourne.
Okay. Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question I have is about the dumpsters. So that's not in the original plan, but it looks like there was a space for it there. How many dumpsters are you planning for? And, you know, what kind of fence are you looking to put around that?
So there is a built-in dumpster enclosure. I think they can house two large dumpsters and recycling. And, you know, it's directly adjacent to the restaurant itself. On the left side of this site plan would be more of the service entrance where staff could bring... Accept deliveries as well as trash, you know, and trash would leave the building so it wouldn't be going through, you know, the public area of the restaurant. So it's actually kind of conveniently... The dumpsters are conveniently located. People don't have to walk across the parking lot.
Can you talk a little bit about the fencing for the dumpsters at all?
It's presently... There's no roof on that section of the building, and so it naturally vents. And it's just doors. So, you know, obviously, you know, odors would have to be controlled because of a public entrance and, you know, people walking by. It would be regularly cleaned area.
That's correct. Steve Duffy with Duffy Properties, the owner. Currently, right now, the dumpsters that are anticipated there, there'd be doors that would open when they need access to be removed and then to be closed afterwards. You don't see the dumpsters.
Can you get into a little more detail on what those doors might look like with regard to materials or colors or anything like that?
They were already there.
Oh, they're not? Okay, thank you.
One question.
Sure.
Is there going to be a bar in there? I noticed it said a liquor license.
Right on the sign.
Yeah, a fairly sizable.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
So can the employees access the dumpster area from inside the building, or do they have to go outside?
They will have to go outside. They're... They're to the left.
Mine's more just a quick comment, actually. I just need to make a comment to the fact that in the 33 years I've been on the Boards in town, I feel like we've had some big projects. We've had some exciting projects. But I have to honestly say, I'm not... I've never been more excited to see a business come into town. This is exactly what we've envisioned for that downtown. And I know the Duffys, we went... It was a lot... It was a long process. But, you know, I got to commend you on the job you did over there. It's phenomenal. And it's... It looks nice. It's a great addition to the town, and this is going to be a great addition to the town.
I agree, Joe. That's why we embraced John and his concept coming here. Because we thought it... I mean, we heard from you, Bill. We heard from you, Joe. We heard from you, Barbara. It's something the Town wanted. They didn't want necessarily a different type of, you know, multi-restaurant concept there. So that's something that I told our brokers to go looking for, so.
Member Sutherland? Can you unmute her, please? Thank you.
Hello, all right, you can hear me now.
Yes.
I'm also equally excited for this. I'm also excited to hear you all promoting it as a family venue. In that vein of it being a family venue, I do have a small request, especially as a mom to now three kids. Would you all be planning on having changing tables in the men's bathroom?
I love that request.
Changing tables in the men's bathroom?
Oh, the mom as well.
We're all for equity. So there would be... And I'm a father of three, and I've changed many of my children through the years. The... So yes, there would be changing tables for both women and men's bathrooms.
Thank you. Is anyone else on the Board have any questions, comments, concerns that they'd like to make?
Oh, Ernie goes.
Member Covino?
Ernie, it should be a... You have to press unmute. I'm sending him. I can't hear. Ernie, there should be something on your screen. Look at your screen. There should be a request to unmute. Do you see that?
Is that better? Does that work?
There we are.
Okay, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Just a comment, not a question. And that is the major thing I've been hearing about from people all over town is we're getting all these new restaurants, these new restaurants, but I got to spend a week's pay to go out to dinner. So I think you'd be more than welcome here, and you should do very well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there any...
Yes. Staff have a few questions, I suppose. So I know we're all very excited for this. I just did want to ensure that the applicant had a chance to review the Board of Health comments and that everything is...
Board of Health expressed... It was a comment just about the grease trap capacity and how that relates to the seating. So if the seat count, in order to satisfy that, we're fine with that being a condition. So if it's possible for us to be able to work that out with the Board of Health, that would be preferred as well. At a minimum, if we had to reduce the seat capacity, that's fine, so.
But one thing I would like to emphasize. This gentleman, John Tebow, was spending a lot of money on this. You would not believe the amount of money to fit up a brand-new restaurant today. So I would like the Board's consideration with regards to what the number of seats means because there's ways to get around grease traps and the sizing of grease traps. You can empty them so much quicker. You can, rather than twice a year, you can empty them, you know, four times a year. So there's ways to get around. So I wouldn't necessarily discount his request for the number of seats.
I don't think that that's necessarily with an operative. I think that would be more with the help, you know, with the Board of Health. So as long as the Board of Health is satisfied, we're satisfied. We're not contesting the amount of seats that's being requested at this time.
Thank you.
You have our support. Go ahead.
Little thing that I just want to point out to the applicant that temporary signs are not allowed, especially right here in the Town Center. It will be in your decision, but I just wanted to call your attention to it. So you will have signage that's approved probably through the Board of Appeals, but temporary signs of any nature are not allowed, the flag signs and such.
Okay. Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that has any questions, comments, or concerns that they would like to make?
I believe we had Bruce Moore, who was online.
Okay.
He was... I can...
If you can unmute him and then...
I just sent a request.
Okay.
Bruce, if you're still there, if you want to speak now, there should be something on your screen.
Thanks, Caleb. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Bruce Moore, happened to be a Town Meeting member, precinct one. I couldn't, you know, more effectively echo Mr. Pembah's and the other Planning Board members' comments. I'm really just calling into... It sounds like it's going to be supported, but I support this petitions initiative. I think it's a great option. We've struggled, as everybody in that room and on the line here knows, we've struggled to fill the shops at Simon's shop for a long time. I think it's probably 50% vacancy now. And this is an absolute no-brainer opportunity for to bring in a local non-chain establishment into this underutilized area here in Burlington. And I think that we have, you know, as I mentioned, we've had difficult time filling these spaces, and this opportunity kills two birds. It gets a great tenant, a great... It gets a great tenant, a great option for Burlington and, and, and outside communities to attend, uh, and adds them, uh, and, and brings in, again, I've talked to many neighbors and friends, constituents, people, people have emailed me saying that they, they, they would really like this, um, to, to be supported. So, I just wanted to weigh in, uh, and good luck, uh, good luck to the proponent. Uh, I think this is a great option, and, and, and thanks for hearing me.
Great, thank you. Uh, Mr. Duffy, if you would kindly share your microphone, there's a couple folks in the audience who would, would like to join us as well. Thank you.
So, I share the same opinion as some of the members have shared, that welcome to the town. This is great.
This has been vacant for a long time, and we need something like this. We need more like this in the, in the downtown area. Uh, I, I'm one of the better, I got the later. Uh, so, one question I have is like, do you expect ever like a parking overflow where the parking, you might have need parking in a, some of the side streets? Uh, because my house is like very next to this property, and it will be very near, so...
We're, we're, we're not anticipating any, uh, issue with the parking. I, I think that, uh, Mr. Duffy did submit a letter just indicating that, you know, the, the, the balance of the tenancy there is such that, uh, two of the largest tenants actually aren't even open on the weekends. I think it's Cambridge, uh, um...
Bank.
Veterinary, and as well as Safari Kids, uh, aren't open during the weekend.
Or evenings.
And the bank.
Or, or evenings for that matter. Thanks, Mark. And that, you know, the other tenants are all like eight AM to four PM, some of them, you know, uh, a lot of them close at five. There might be a couple that are open in the evening, there's a couple of fitness concepts, but I think that, you know, this restaurant, you know, their hours would be more during the evening when the vast majority of the tenants are, are not there. So, I think it's a good complimentary arrangement in terms of the whole parking situation there. So, I mean, there are on, on-street spaces available, if, you know, if someone was up at the, the Town Common here for a, a band show in the summer or something, they, they would park there, they could always walk over, right? There's really no need for you to get in your car and then drive over and park again. So, I, I, I think there's some synergies there that will allow it to all work well.
Yeah, and I'm hoping that you get, uh, good customers there, you know, during the summer season and everything. Uh, the only suggestion I have, in case if you anticipate more parking, uh, need for more parking, then I live on a street which is very accessible from your building, you'll be able to walk there. So, I welcome you again. Uh, I would suggest, uh, planning board to put some signs on the street that says no parking or two-hour parking or something, whatever is appropriate, on, on the street that I live, which is very near to the, to the, to this property. And I know it's only fifty percent, as the more occupancy comes, and other stores come, you might need, you know, additional parking or, or, uh, employee parking or other things, so, some, something like that will be good, uh, appropriate, on the, on the street which are very close to the Cambridge Street.
Excuse me, I can answer that. They, it would actually not, wouldn't be up to us to do no parking, being the Board of Selectmen, but I suspect that if there was gonna be overflow parking, it would probably take place on Center Street because the banks are not open at, in the evenings.
Yes.
On the weekends. You know, the town hall's not open in the evenings or weekends, so that, there's all pa, there's parking all along that street as well. So, it, it's much easier to walk from there than it would be to walk from Forbes probably, so.
No, I, I totally, so mine is Forbes, and it is further down.
Right.
So, you are right, and then that street is like narrow, so if people, when the people park on the street, it becomes a little, uh, difficult to pass through. So, no, that, that, that is great. Uh, the second thing I have is a concern about the planning board, I know you don't wanna talk about it, but hopefully planning board will not delay your applications. My experience hasn't been good with planning board, I know you don't...
This is inappropriate. Please step down.
No, this is...
Excuse me, sir, we're not doing this again.
Let me, let, let me speak about...
Please, no, we're not talking about this. We have gone through this several times. I am not doing this. This is borderline harassment. I'm done. Please step down.
What you just did in the beginning, not allowing me to speak, and now also, you know, it is not good for the town. This is not good for our democracy.
Is there anyone else in the, the audience that would like to speak?
Right.
Mr. Parker, please.
So, I, I certainly hope that, uh, planning board doesn't delay your application like they did to me. Hopefully it gets approved.
Please step down. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
For the record, Rick Parker, a lifelong resident, also President of the Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce. Bruce Moore, and both Joe and Bruce Moore stole a little bit of my thunder, thunder, but I wanted to come out. Um, I know that members of this board, you have lives outside of this room, as do I. The number-one question we've been asked for the last, since this building went up is, when are we gonna get a restaurant in there? Um, we've heard a lot about what residents didn't want, and I can go into great detail about that, but I won't. And we heard what they did want. They wanted something different, something affordable, something family-friendly, something that would add to the culture, something with music. It's a very difficult time to open a restaurant. As you, you heard, there's a lot of money that's gonna be spent. Most organizations look at it strictly from a profit and loss statement. This applicant, thank God, he's a little bit different than, than most of the applicants that come before you. Um, we've found somebody who fits the bill. There's not a lot of them out there. Um, I think this would be a great addition, totally support it. Um, it's gonna help to bring the walkability to that area that those small businesses really depend on, and have been really holding on waiting for, so I won't waste any more of your time. I appreciate your support of this, this item. Thank you.
Not a waste. Thank you very much, Mr. Parker.
I agree.
Um, is there anyone else in the audience, online, or presently, that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, this is a public hearing, uh, may have a motion to close the public hearing. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
All this, oh, sorry. Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Empemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I would further like to make a motion to approve the request of Goodnight Jones for a special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point ten, Restaurants of the Burlington Zoning Bylaw, for property located at one fifty-four Cambridge Street, subject to the terms and conditions in exhibit A attached.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Empemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Sutherland. Welcome to Burlington, sir.
Yes, we're excited. I'm excited.
Excellent.
Have a good evening, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to take item seven B, seven E, together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Empemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yeah.
Item B is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point seven point one, light manufacturing or processing plants, prototype manufacturing, the zoning bylaws, six through eight, six to eight, Adams Street. Twenty-first Century Concrete Inc. is the applicant. Item C is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to four point two point seven point nine, hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the zoning bylaws. Six to eight, Adams Street, Twenty-first Century Concrete Inc. is the applicant. Item D is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to six point one point one, nonconforming uses of the zoning bylaws, six to eight, Adams Street, Twenty-first Century Concrete Inc. is the applicant. Item E is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to six point one point two, nonconforming structures and premises to the zoning bylaws, six to eight, Adams Street, Twenty-first Century Concrete Inc. is the applicant. Good evening, folks.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thomas Murphy here for the applicant. With me at the table is, uh, Maria Clemente, uh, the proponent. Um, Mina Wood is the, one of the engineers of the project, also Mary Trudeau, with the Oatland's consultants. Um, this is our third time in, as the board knows. Last time, we were asked to provide a dust, um, uh, plan, which we've done. Uh, we also kinda talked a bit about conditions regarding some enhanced landscaping and, um, potentially appeasement that the town might need of some sort, where they'd ever build out a sidewalk over there. And we submitted some proposal language, and I've actually seen, um, the draft decision which incorporated language about those two, um, items as well. Um, the third thing that came up at the last meeting, apparently there is some concrete, old concrete blocks along the side of the road, kind of in the, in the brush, um, which my client agreed to remove, in a term to that, um, effect was, is in the decision as well. The only thing that I would, um, to follow up on that, with that discussion, it was kinda pointed out that we're probably gonna need a, a detail, police detail, because it's a narrow roadway, and it's gonna be a tough... So, uh, we're more than happy to, uh, do the work necessary to pull it out, but if there's any way that the town could provide the police detail, uh, to just, uh, for the traffic control for however long that takes, because it's just a narrow roadway.
Steph, I don't think that's an issue, do you?
I don't think so. I don't know what, I've never encountered it before in my seven years here, so I don't know what...
No. Member Covino?
The process would be, but I can find out.
Member Covino, do you have any history with that?
Uh, no history, but I, I would say, uh, if, if Attorney Murphy would accept the, that the planning board would urge the selectmen to waive the, the detail fee, or something like that, I, I don't know. I don't really know. I know it's, uh, relatively expensive for a detail, so I understand where they're coming from.
Uh, we'll cooperate to whatever degree is necessary to make that request, it's just that, um, obviously, as there is there...
Sure.
Predates my client, but he's still willing to do the work to get it out, but, uh, don't know how long it will take, and it could potentially cause some traffic congestion.
Understood. Understood. Thank you.
Uh, other than that, Madam Chair, um, we're obviously willing to answer any other questions or, and any concerns the board might have, but, um, the, the proposed decision, um, is almost verbatim from the two thousand and six decision, which is a very well researched and well documented decision by this board a number of years ago. Uh, and we've said from the beginning, we're more than happy to continue to operate under those conditions. Uh, they've worked, and we're confident they'll continue to work, so, um, we're satisfied with the, with the proposed decision that, that I was shown this afternoon, uh, but we're obviously willing to talk about anything else the board might have.
Understood. Steph?
Um, I, um, I, you know, I'm comfortable with this, I don't have any additional comments, gonna do some research on the police detail and what that...
Sure.
...that means. Um, but as far as, um, I've con, I'm concerned, you know, uh, you know, there is a clause in the new permit that all previous conditions will remain in place and all that stuff, so, you know, um, I've updated it to the best of my ability right now, so I'm, I'm comfortable.
Sure, and, um, whoever's chair or vice-chair at that time will walk the property, I think is what we, we determined to, to look at landscaping.
Yes, there's a clause in there about the landscaping and that, and, you know, I set a, a to-do date, that's, you know, June, the end of June, to do that by, just so, just keeps on our radar, so it's done.
Sure.
Um, and again, you know, native plantings, and we can, Mayor Trudeau can advise of what we should be doing there, but yeah.
Yes, um, and while I, I wasn't there, while I wasn't present for the original walk, I also saw the swan, by the way. Just wanna make sure, for the record, the swan still is, is present. Um, does anyone else on the board have any questions, comments, concerns that they'd like to make on this matter? Sure.
Just one, I know we had a whole contingent of people here from Lexington area, surrounding area, I think, uh, it sounds like maybe their concerns have been addressed, or...
I think it's my understanding that it's, they've been addressed as much as we can address them.
Yeah.
You know, the present use is, the present use, it's been the present use for quite some time. We can do the best we can. If there's something new that occurs, then we can address something new, but, you know, where we are.
The fact that they're not present, to me, seems like they're...
We do have one gentleman who is present.
No, I know, I, I'm sorry, I, I know you're here, but there were other, there were others as well, and I don't know if...
Right.
Yeah. Are they on, are they online? Okay, so...
Yeah, again, you know, that the use has been the same, until we see something change or we have some type of notification that something is different, or there is a different outcome of the use, there's not really much we can do.
Right.
Yeah, we, we should support the, the applicant to move forward, if you deem fit.
One quick comment?
Please.
I just wanna thank the applicant for agreeing to remove the unsightly cement things. It was, um, a little embarrassing to find out that the ugliest part of your site was ours. And we appreciate you helping us clean it up.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, is anyone else, uh, Member Covino, Member Sutherland, everyone's good? Um, this is a public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, Member Covino?
Yeah, just, uh, just one quick thing, just to reiterate for a few seconds, uh, what I said last time around, and basically, uh, if the special permit had been issued to the use and not directly to the owner, we wouldn't even be doing this. This is basically just a change of ownership. I was involved in the original permitting, and, and we spent a lot of time on it, and that's taken us six, eight months, uh, to get it done, because we did it right, and, uh, and, uh, just to the point of even doing a field trip to one of their other plants to see that the cement itself was actually encased in a closed container, and were, and then went from in that clo, from that closed container right into the truck. There were no piles of cement laying around or anything to create, um, silica dust, I think is what they call it, but, uh, so, I'm, I'm very comfortable in, in just voting to allow a new owner to take over, especially since, uh, the same people are going to be involved in running the operation who are currently involved. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Covino. Um, this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience, online, or presently, that would like to speak? Sir, if you would.
Thank you. Um, I'll introduce myself again, I'm Dr. Metta, I live across in Lexington, and, as I'd said before, um, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. Um, I fully understand that this is a continuation, and that is not the con, issue that we are bringing up. What we're bringing up is that it is 2006, and this is a different time. Things have changed, and if you look at it from our vantage point, there are a couple of things that I'd like you to consider. You already talked about cleaning up Adams Street and making it aesthetically better. But if you come to our side, and I have photographs, at this time of the year, when there are no trees, well, the trees are there, but there are no leaves, you get a straight view of the cement, of the gravel pile. And when the snow is not there, there's no obstruction of the dust coming through. So, that's something to consider, because I think part of this is dust mitigation. I have a photograph here. It shows you the gravel pile. It's this evening's photograph, and you can see. Similarly, the noise comes through. And thank you for the response, Planning Director, because I think you clarified a few things. There's a lot of trash that's on that side of Weinbrook. I didn't know which town it belonged to. My assumption was that Weinbrook bisected the two towns. But if it turns out to be Lexington's trash, to give trash a name, I'm going to take it up with Lexington, because it is unsightly, it's also pollutant. There are tires out there, there is a lot of trash out there. So, somebody needs to clean it up, and it's only obvious when you can see through the trees.
So, Steph, you determined that this was on the Lexington line?
I did.
Okay. So, then they.
Yeah, so that is a clarification. I didn't know. So, I asked, and I think we got a response, which was really.
When you talk to Lexington, tell them not to throw it onto our side.
You know, I'm a clinician, and I'm trying to get things better in my own backyard, and for all of us. So, what I urge you to look at is mitigation measures to make it easier for us, both aesthetically and also from the dust perspective. I don't know what the dust plans are, but at this time of the year, it's pretty obvious. And the second thing, which I, and the last point I raised, which is, you know, it's not a we-they issue here. What I'm trying to say is that they're in our backyard, we are in their backyard. Is there a way, because there's a whole ecological system there, wildlife, it's really very pretty.
I've attended.
Yeah. So, is there something we can do together, and this is what I've talked to my other neighbors, to really do some environmental stewardship? I don't know what it is, but if we come together, I am open to have a forum, to have a regular discussion with the new owners, and do something that will actually make it an exemplar of what we can do if we work together. That's all I'm trying to raise.
I don't think that, I mean, I think it's a wonderful idea, but I don't think that having some type of forum or committee to preserve that is going to impede this decision, whether or not that is formed. I mean, I think it's a lovely idea, and I support it. If the owner would like to do something along those lines, that would be, you know, something that you folks would discuss between yourselves.
Okay. So, then the only thing from our perspective is what you are doing, you know, oversight of the, that makes sure that it's all conforming to what's required. I don't know what those standards are, that the dust standards meet certain benchmarks, and that this, which I urge you to see and look from our side, it is really something that if we can mitigate, it'll be really helpful.
How long have you been at that property, sir?
How long have I lived? 1997.
Okay.
So, I've seen the whole evolution of the gravel pit to the ready-mix to this.
I understand. You know, it's, it's a very difficult statement to make, but when we purchase property that's next to commercial property, you know, we'd like to think our neighbors are going to work with us. And, you know, again, I think that, you know, they may be open to something about making, you know, a stronger environmental stance. I don't know. Again, that's a conversation between you and them. But it's hard, you know, from our position.
No, no, I'm not asking, I'm just raising it.
We can't really do much. You bought a home near a cement plant. It was there when you bought it, right?
No, the cement plant came later. It was a gravel pit before.
Oh, I'm sorry, a gravel pit, excuse me. So, but the use has been the same for quite some time. So, again, if there was something new and there was some type of medical impact or other impact that has changed since you've moved in, that would be something, a discussion point. But at this point in time, there's not really much, we can't tell the proponent that they can't continue to conduct a business that's been there for quite some time.
That is never the intention. I think we knew it moved from a gravel pit to a ready-mix, that was the change. Then you took action, because that was a different use. Now, I understand it's a continued use, but over time, one gets a sense of what are the things that can improve. And that's why we actually came here. We, when we started, we didn't come up, it was not an antagonistic stand, that's not what we.
No, no, and I understand that.
We just wanted to make sure that we can work together to make this different. And these are opportunities to make suggestions, just like you're making to clean up the, you know, concrete blocks.
Sure.
That's what we are trying to do.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
We understand.
Thank you very much for your time, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience, online, that would like to make a comment or has a question?
I see no one raising their hands, no?
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on these matters.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
Oh, no, yes, you're correct. We're doing roll call. It's not here, but we have to do it. F O Port. LaRue.
Second.
Yes.
Second.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Impamba.
Yes.
Covino. Yes, he's shaking his head yes. Sutherland.
Yes.
Okay.
He didn't say me.
Oh, sorry, Natola, sorry. Sorry.
Yes.
Sorry.
Madam Chair, I would further like to make a motion to approve the request of 21st Century Concrete Incorporated for a special permit pursuant to Sections 4.2.7.1, Light Manufacturing and Processing Plants, and 4.2.7.9, Hazardous Chemicals, Materials and Chemicals Used, Storage, Transport, and Discharge of the Burlington zoning bylaw for property located at 6 to 8 Adams Street, Subject to the terms and conditions in Exhibit B attached.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Impamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you for attending, sir. Appreciate your input. Moving on to minutes, folks. What do we got for minutes? Is there anyone that's excluded from these minutes? Let's.
I have to recue our Epstein from January 19th one, because I wasn't here.
That's true.
Yes. The rest of them I can do. So, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of December 1st, 2023, and January 1st, 2023.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Impamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Covino. Sutherland.
Yeah.
And, Madam Chair, I would also like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of January 19th, 2023.
Second.
Sorry. Rappaport.
Yes.
LaRue.
Epstein.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Impamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
So, six zero one. Okay.
Okay, moving on. So, we have some discussion.
Sure. So, first on the discussion items are land use committee. So, I went to speak at the land use committee on Monday and gave them an overview of the law regarding MBTA communities. Got different opinions from different people. I think people were shocked, still trying to kind of absorb it. It's kind of new, different. So, I did that, I did get a question from their chair as to who the liaison to the Planning Board for the land use committee is right now, or has been. Ernie, I don't know, are you official, or do you have you just go? Or I know Ernie has gone in the, I don't know. I don't know.
I am not official, Sergeant. I know every once in a while, when they're reviewing something I'm interested in, I go. I went a lot before when they were doing the change to the PDD bylaw. Since then, no, I haven't. I'd be perfectly willing to let somebody else go. So, you're so kind. You're so, so kind. I can't help it. Well, who's on the subcommittee? For MBTA?
Bill and I are.
Okay. So, I think it would be logical that it would be one of you two.
I'm happy to be the liaison for MBTA communities, but I don't know if I can go to all the land use committee meetings.
They're on Monday nights at 7:00, downstairs in the Annex basement.
So, it's not even something that we can attend virtually?
That would conflict with my recreation duty, so please don't direct.
Maybe address this offline.
Yeah, let's talk about this.
I just wanted to throw it out there.
Yeah, we'll talk about this offline. Okay, so MBTA communities, subcommittee meeting update.
So, we need to schedule a meeting and do that. So, let's do it now. Are you guys available next Wednesday at 5:00?
Wednesday, that's the eighth.
I should actually check my calendar before.
What is this, next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday, yeah.
I see.
Well, you guys are doing that.
This is for what? The MBTA subcommittee.
Has everyone, so, both Ernie and Jessica, we received an email regarding Burlington.org email addresses.
Yes.
There is a form that you folks need to sign, so at your convenience, I guess, can you email it to them?
Yeah, no, it's been emailed. And so, Jess, you don't, if you just want to take a picture of it and email it, I don't think you need to come in. You're good, and Ernie, you can do the same. You know, it's just basically.
My agenda's been marking up, so I might just, I can probably swing by tomorrow.
No, don't. Jess, we'll figure something out, don't worry.
So, yeah, and then MBTA communities subcommittee, we can work that out offline as well.
I can do Wednesday at 5:00. Can you go? Okay, we'll get back to him on that.
Is there anything else that anyone on the board that would like to discuss?
I would just like to bring one thing forward, and that is that the Burlington Sculpture Park Committee is intending to do some construction at the site this coming spring. We've put out an RFP. We do not have very many people bidding on it, so I just want to let everyone know.
Type of construction?
We are going to be formalizing the entrance and creating a pathway that's going to be to make it safely. Right now, it's rocky and rather dangerous. It'll come around to the right, and then there'll be a bench with a pad next to the bench so someone can sit in a wheelchair next to them on the bench. So, it's not a large project, but.
Landscapers is what we.
And paving. I don't know if those are the same people.
Potentially, depending on materials used.
So, we just want to put a call out there, and if anyone else knows a business that might be interested in doing this work for us, we really need some more quotes.
Maybe we could post it on the planning page, and then also.
Sounds like a good idea.
We could post that on the residence page.
I can do that, yeah.
The residence page.
Yeah, I did that, but nobody answered.
Okay, well, maybe we'll share from planning.
That would be, we need like a nice photograph, I'm worried people's attention on the residence page.
All right, sounds good. Okay, well, folks.
One more question.
Sure.
I just add on to that, the Recreation Department doesn't know that stuff, so maybe we can hook up with the Recreation folks to see who they use.
Yes, we did meet with the town, and the first request was, can you do it? And they said, yes, you should send out an RFP. But perhaps we might end up doing that.
So, now we have to have this, what time?
Actually, but it may wait until the time it takes to get the project done. But I was considering reaching out to Shashi.
That is actually something that you should do. We had our, at our last department head meeting, with Paul Sagrin and everybody, they did send out a list of things that they do, but again, it's like school year timeframes, right? So, you do, it's going to take longer, but like, think school schedule.
But if it would save us a chunk of money, we could do it in September, maybe.
I mean, it's something to consider, it's someplace to reach out. They did, they have solicited all the towns and said, hey, we're.
Do you have contact?
I can find out.
Okay, great, thank you. Because I know they did work at Francis Wyman some years ago on a brick patio there. They did a great job.
They did the grand view.
They did a good job.
They did the beautiful job at the grand view.
So, maybe we'll do that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just another one from the Recreation Commission. Lot of discussion, I know you're tired of hearing about the pickleball, but the issues with the neighbors there, and they'd like to not only get it moved up as a temporary situation, which will cost the town, you know, oh, close to $100,000 for a temporary move a little bit away from their houses, but they're always looking for us to see if there's an opportunity when folks come in for very large projects to have it on their site, something like a miter field, where, you know, again, I know there's liability issues and things like that, but, you know, they're very, it's a very difficult situation because of the continuous noise with them. And if we can, as these applicants come in, you know, as an opportunity to work with them to see versus just one pickleball court that they have for themselves and, you know. So, you know, there's a lot of pavement out there, and again, you know, maybe they can, in kind, provide some money.